I'm hitting this gavel seven thirty whether we finish or not. It'll be automatic pilot.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Landale City Council to order. Welcome everyone. I'm gonna ask our city clerk to give us the roll call. Madam, city clerk.
Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman here. Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask for the pledge of allegiance is gonna be conducted by Councilwoman Shirley Cuevas. In leading us today in a inspiration would be Pastor Jeffrey M. Lewis from New Antioch Church of God in Christ.
Please stand. Please face the flag, right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Our time of inspiration will come from the Book of Second Chronicles, Chapter Seven, beginning at verse thirteen. It says, "When I shut up the heavens so that there is no rain, or command the locusts to devour the land, or send pestilence among my people; if my people who are called by my name humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their ways, then will I hear from heaven, and will forgive their sins, and heal their land; now my eyes will be open, and my ears attentive to the prayer that is made in this place." Would you bow your heads? Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this time, we thank you for this gathering. God, we ask that you continue to lead and guide and direct the leaders of the city of Landale. We are in a time now where we need your help like never before. We pray that this meeting, let it be a productive meeting, let it be a peaceful meeting, let much be accomplished even as topics are discussed on today. And Father, we give you glory, honor, and praise, in the name of your matchless son, we pray. Amen. Amen. Thank you so much Pastor Lewis for joining us once again today. We appreciate the word of inspiration, God bless you. Okay, let's hear our public safety report, let's hear from our Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Lieutenant Salgado, South Los Angeles Station with the safety report. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I am here tonight to present the public safety report for September seventh, twenty twenty-two through September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. On September eighteenth, at approximately thirteen thirty hours or one thirty PM yesterday, Landale deputies Bauer and Omora, they located the vehicle that was used in the fatal hit and run, which occurred back in August twenty-eighth. So they followed the cameras through where the incident occurred and just the diligent work following cameras that led them to Van Ness and Artesia. And they were able to track it to that area, and then once they were in that area, they lost. They couldn't find any more cameras that let, you know, for any more leads, but they searched the area in apartment complexes and they were able to find the vehicle. So at this time, it's still an active investigation. They have more leads, and the, once the vehicle was towed, they'll hold it for prints and follow up on that. Again, there's active investigation, cell phone tracking, so, search warrants and so forth to identify the driver. And we, before we give any more information, we need to make sure that we identify the driver of the vehicle. That way we can move forward and solve the case. And there's one other incident that was brought to my attention last week was a suspicious circumstance death. And in this case, you know, regular call for service, a person dead, deputies respond and they determine whether it's, you know, a natural cause or if there's suspicious circumstances. This case was suspicious circumstances, and we had to notify our homicide detectives, which then follow up with the coroner's office. And once the coroner conducted their investigation, it was determined that it was natural cause. So it's not a homicide, and, which is a good thing. And, you know, unfortunately for the person that passed, but it wasn't a suspicious circumstance or homicide. And that concludes the report for this week. And up next Sergeant Osborne is gonna introduce our new motor deputy to the city of Landale.
Good evening Sergeant Osborne. Wanted to introduce you guys to your new motor. I know it's been a little while since Landale's had a motor unit. So this is Deputy Rodriguez, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Good evening, my name is Eduardo Rodriguez. I've been with the department approximately fifteen years. I've been at the station going on seven years. I've been given the opportunity to be Landale's motor. So here I am. Get to meet everybody. Hopefully I don't give anybody a ticket. But get to meet you guys.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, are there any questions of the lieutenant's report?
I do have a question.
Yes, yes ma'am.
I know you give us a detailed report where it tells us how many arrests and what you guys found. Is there any way that, once a month, we could get a detailed report on how many calls you guys get? And what kind of calls they are, if it's domestic abuse, or if it's, what are the related, those calls, like what percentage of calls are for possession or?
Absolutely. Ricky, do we have something in place already for that?
No.
So, I just happened to speak with the crime analyst last week because I wanted to know for myself. Because now that I'm dealing with the city, I needed, wanted questions, right? I knew this question might come up. So she's gonna work with me to give me, whether it's a weekly status for myself or a monthly, and then I can provide that to you.
Maybe a monthly?
Okay.
And then you could present it?
Perfect.
At one of our meetings?
Sure.
So that all of our citizens know what type of work you guys are doing?
Absolutely.
Basically, because we don't have much coverage.
Right.
You know, we have limited cars on the street.
Correct.
So we wanna know what those cars are doing.
Absolutely. And at the beginning, it's not gonna be as detailed as you might want it, because we only have one crime analyst, and she covers all of the area here in South Los Angeles. But we'll do our best to give you, you know, a synopsis of every call.
Just an idea, you know?
Okay.
We had thirty arrests in one month, and ten calls were for domestic abuse, or something like that.
And then I can email it as well, and you can have the report once a month.
But I also would like our citizens to know what your team is working.
Perfect. Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Yes, ma'am.
First off, I wanna say thank you, and great job for the diligent work that you and your team has done to figure out where this vehicle was. That is intense that you and your team worked that hard and were able really to use it for the cameras. Cameras are the way to go in this day and age.
Yes, it is.
It's kind of amazing. I've had a couple of, I should say, the last two weeks, I've gotten a lot of complaints. And I don't know if this is something that you guys wanna go back and study a little bit, and maybe not, because I don't wanna catch you off guard. Two issues that I'm hearing over and over again right now from residents. Number one, the youths on the e-bikes. I think every single person in my neighborhood is scared to death of these kids that are recklessly riding these e-bikes through the neighborhood, rounding corners, not using stop signs, really don't even act like they have a destination in which they're going in. Of course, their parent is sitting at home thinking that their wonderful child hasn't done anything and is abiding by the rules. And I'm hearing from people scared to death to go out and drive because of these, these bikes are everywhere. The next thing that seems to be over and over again the last week, hold on one second. The use of loud mufflers on Hawthorne Boulevard. I didn't realize that that was becoming such a big deal, but evidently it is. Evidently, they're doing some type of modification to their cars to make them louder. Is that something that the Sheriff's Department is aware of, either one of those issues, or any information you can give us?
You know, both of the issues are important, and I'll look into it as well as what we can do with the e-bikes. The e-bikes is gonna start at home with the parents. We need to work on some type of, you know, campaign to, you know, inform the parents that these bikes are dangerous. They need to follow the rules of the road, they need to wear helmets, et cetera, right? But that one, we'll have to follow up and see what we can do. Because if enforcement is moved to the e-bikes, then we're moving it from one place to another. And it really can't get solved unless the parents get involved, I believe, right? But let me do some research and let's see what we can do on it.
Yes, and I would like to know if you guys are even getting calls, because what I'm hearing out in the neighborhood is when, when residents are telling me, well, they wanted to go to the grocery store, they wanted to go to the post office, but they can't, they're not going to because, oh, I just can't stand to go out because I'm going to hit one of them.
Sure. I will follow up on that. The times that I've been at the station as the watch commander, I don't hear those calls coming in, I don't hear them on the radio, I don't see them typed in. Maybe they need to start notifying us about the call so we can check the area. And if they do see the teens on the bike, give them the warning so the parents can, you know, be aware of that as well, right? Now that we have a motor deputy as well, maybe that enforcement will work both ways for the e-bikes and for the loud mufflers on Hawthorne Boulevard. Easy access for the motor, you know, to go in and out of traffic when, when they see a vehicle with loud mufflers, right? But let me get back to you on that and see what's the best way to, you know, to deal with it.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I just wanna commend your deputies for the, the great deputy investigative work on the, the hit and run fatal fatality there. Of course, our hearts and prayer goes out to the family of the victim and the decedents. But I wanna thank you, the deputies, for their investigative work, and hopefully we can bring this person to justice real soon.
Thank you, and just, just to follow up on that, you know, Detective Garcia was nonstop since the day it happened. They came in that morning, and then the deputies assigned to him were nonstop every day. That's, that's what their mission was, to go out there and gather information, gather the, the intelligence that they needed to solve the crime, the fatal TC. So they were nonstopping, when I heard, you know, yesterday I was working at one thirty PM and I got the phone call that they found the car, which is great news. And now we just have to tie it in and make sure it gets solved and justice is brought to the family.
And we'll make sure we, we put a, the appropriate notification in the Deputy Garcia's.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Profile.
Absolutely. The detective and all the deputies involved?
Absolutely.
As well as Sergeant Osborne.
Absolutely, you, you can identify him for us, and we appreciate all her work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Will that be all?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yes, sir. I'll turn the page now. All right. Okay. All right, so we've heard from our public safety report, let's hear it from oral communications. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to do so, this would be the time to do so. We ask that you line up by the flag when it becomes your, your turn, if, when you come to the podium, if you can just start with your name first, we would appreciate that. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. You don't have to wait for your name to be called, just simply after the person before you exit the podium, feel free to approach, approach the podium. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Librarian.
Good morning. Good morning, good evening, everybody. Sorry, I'm still trying to wake up here. My name is Michelle Pino from Landale Library, and I'm just here just to bring attention to our citizens that we have on park passes. And you can use this at any state park. And they are available at the library, and please come and talk to us about it so we can get everybody started, so they can visit all the state parks in California. And second, I'm also here on behalf of Friends of the Library to thank council members, Shirley Cuevas, for the donation that was given to them, which is something that it's gonna be put into great use. They do pay a lot of our programming that we do in the library, so we appreciate that, thank you. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Elena Meloni, and I serve as the Executive Director of the New Star Family Justice Center. We are a domestic violence agency serving the South Bay. Our office is just a few blocks away from here, in the city of Hawthorne. Many clients who seek our services are from the city of Landale. We are proud to offer an array of prevention and intervention services to help families break the cycle of violence. All of our services are free and are offered in English and in Spanish. So we are here tonight with my colleague to formally introduce ourselves, as well as to invite all of you to our Power of Hope Domestic Violence Awareness Campaign that will be held on Friday, October seventh. At this event, our Chief of Police, Chief Michael Ishi, will be recognized by Senator Bradford for his commitment to work together to end family violence. We brought a few flyers here for the event and also of our services, that if it's okay with you, we would like to post it there upfront, for, you know, to share with the community. Finally, I would like to invite all of you to come for a site visit. And I didn't realize that the sheriff left, but we would definitely like to have the sheriff come and visit us so that you can see firsthand what clients experience when they enroll in our program, and how we help families break the, the cycle of violence. And I know my colleague is coming next, and I just, would just also introduce her, Marilyn Sanabia. She is the Program Director for the Family Justice Center Services. And I would also like to say that she is also a distinguished councilwoman for the city of Huntington Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and city staff. I would like to just further on the information my executive director gave us. One of the things that makes the Family Justice Centers unique is that we're a one-stop shop for any person that, or any person that's experiencing domestic violence and also elderly abuse. We're there to provide and connect people to whatever services they are. Some of these services are assistance with restraining orders, enrollment in benefits, teen dating prevention programs, anti-bullying, hopeful art wellness, and so much more. As you stated, these, and therapy, both in English and Spanish. We will be giving out this information because it's important for the community to know that there is resources, and they're not alone. We are here to survive. And just for everyone at home, if you need help, our phone number is four two four three three six nine four seven zero. That number once again is four two four three three six nine four seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, sir.
Good evening. The nonprofits that sold fireworks this year were required to submit financial documents summarizing fireworks sales and costs by September first. There is also a November first deadline detail on how the net income received is spent in accordance with the municipal guidelines. The mandate is that at least fifty percent of these funds are to be spent to benefit the youth and or the community of Landale. Although four of the groups selling fireworks last year failed the audit, the city council gave these groups a pass and promised a strong scrutiny this year. After initial review of the documents received by September first, if there are any indication, the word did not get out to all the organizations. The Rotary Club once again missed the deadline, not submitting their request until September twelfth. To make matters worse, their incomplete summary sheet was submitted with a handwritten note. Here are my totals and receipts, I did my best, but I can't figure it out for you now. One of the organizations indicated a negative net income, but the numbers contradict that. Handwritten illegible forms and inconsistencies in reporting will make it difficult for a finance department to decipher some of these reports. These same organizations have been monopolizing these sales for years and should know how to properly complete this simple form. As in past years, the winner of all this is a fireworks manufacturer. Total fireworks sales in twenty twenty-one were three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six eighty-four. This year, total fireworks sales were three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four eighty-nine, with a hundred and seventy-three thousand going to the manufacturers. Deducting the money paid to the fireworks distributors and their setup costs, the combined net income for the six booths was a hundred and thousand dollars. The average net income for the nonprofits works out to nineteen thousand last year, and this year dropped to sixteen thousand, seven ninety-five. How much did the city pay out for enforcement on July fourth and for the staff time required and oversight of the whole process? Of the hundred thousand, of the hundred thousand, a hundred thousand spent net income received, fifty, fifty percent of that, or over fifty thousand, should have some concrete benefit to the youth of Landale and the community. Hopefully, the city will make clear how these funds are to be spent in accordance with municipal code. Payment of salary to the head of an organization hopefully will not be seen again as in last year's. Last, last year, one group spent only fifty-three dollars out of fourteen thousand on the November first reporting. Pens, a TV, and a soundbar were also reported. Last year, by the time of November first reporting, over seventy-nine thousand dollars of the profits had not even been spent. Does the city even know how these funds were spent after that? The city should require a budget for how many, for any remaining funds, and how they're gonna be spent after the November first report. As residents are told that this program is critical to raise funds for the youth of the community, there should be some transparency and accountability as to the expenditures of these funds in accordance with the municipal code. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, Samuel Cruz. I just wanted to go off what Cuevas said with the police reporting, and she's asking for the report, which is really good, because I was actually questioning the same thing of what, what are the police doing? And this is not to discredit them, but as you guys may know, the Freeman and one-sixtieth, we've been having a gang war, and regularly shot, firearms have been being shot. If you drive past their garages, you'll see bullets in their, in their building. So I think that's something that's very concerning, because we don't have regular, routine police surveilling the areas. I'm out and about all, all day long, and I don't see no surveillancing. So I think it's very important that the police continue to surveillance, and then also, maybe it's not in the budget, maybe reconsider the budget to add more police force to the city of Landale, because we have tagging all over, we have shooting, and a bunch of new gang violence coming into our territory, into our area, and it's just unsafe for anyone to be outside. Another thing I wanted to say and remind the community is that to go out and vote on November eighth, register to vote, and every vote matters, and therefore, their vote counts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close public comments and bring it up to the dais for any comments from the council. Let's start with Councilmember Kearney.
Okay, I wanna thank the three ladies and two gentlemen that spoke tonight. I will start with Ms. Librarian, thank you for the updates for the library. And the two ladies from the domestic violence, are you leaving flyers up here for the council? Okay. And the police may be, Sean, you can answer that about getting extra deputies and why we are unable to write at the point right now?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council members. Well, we've already, you know, adopted our budget too, but we have, we are looking at adding additional deputies. Recently, the LASD has mentioned, Sergeant Osborne mentioned, that if we're looking at wanting to add those deputies, to let them know, and then we could look at that item, we're planning on bringing something forward maybe mid-year to discuss future adding of additional deputies. But due to limited staffing, as well as other issues surrounding the sheriffs and LASD, so we're, they, they did throw out there just recently that if cities were looking at, they would look into it, but there's no, you know, committed support on that right now.
And is there not still a freeze on deputy hiring, and?
I'd have to check on that, I just know there's limited staff.
Okay, yeah.
At LASD, and they have a lot of vacancies.
Okay, then can you also speak on the fireworks and the groups this year? Are we bringing them in? Tell them what they did wrong, and if we're gonna allow them to have a booth this next year?
Yeah, so the Finance Director, he's looking at, we're doing an audit, so we're reviewing, they're submitted their, their information. There were some deadlines, and a few of them have not met some of the deadlines. And then we will apply the code accordingly, as directed by council, and then those, when they apply in December, they'll be notified when they apply, if they qualify or not to move forward.
Okay. And with that, Robert, I'll pass it on to Marit.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody that came out tonight, we always like to see a filled audience. So I, I will touch on a few things that I had extra questions with regards to. I am looking forward, by the way, to the flyer, so we can look at those events and make sure that we show support for that. But with regards to a few suggestions or questions by residents, I did wanna go further into Mr. Abrams' questions regarding the fireworks, because if I recall, part of the discussion we had was the application itself, or in my opinion, the city's application. I, I think it needs to be updated, so that it's a little clearer with regards to what we're looking for. I think it would also be helpful to include maybe somewhat of a training session. You know, just get all of the groups that intend to apply and kind of go over, you know, here are the specifics, maybe even have forms ready that they can jot down the information, so we gather what exactly they're looking for, if that's helpful at all. But I definitely think maybe updating the application itself might help resolve some of this. And then with regards to the percentage that they're supposed to contribute, perhaps if that's an issue that they're not able to find or locate, we can offer, you know, the Youth Advisory Committee or something like that as an option for them to donate so that they, they make sure to satisfy the requirements. Just some suggestions, you know, maybe that stuff we wanna look at, to make it easier for them to comply with the process. Because from what I understand, the groups that we get, I don't think we've been getting over the allotted spots. I think we were even one under at some point. So I definitely think that there's not everybody, and maybe too, just getting the word out for more of them to apply for that spot. Just a few suggestions. And then just to add on with regards to the coverage, we did discuss this in one of the sheriff quarterly meetings, and, and that topic did come up at the time with, with regards to the, the freeze that was going on that we had heard about. You know, it's an ongoing conversation, but it's definitely something that has been brought up and discussed. So, you know, if, if the sheriff can supply more, we're more than happy to agendize and speak further about that. And with that, I'll pass it along. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I would like to see who has not turned in their financial reports for the fireworks stands. Because when we last spoke, last, at the beginning of the year, they were all supposed to turn in their paperwork, and if they, that was the deadline, we were not gonna allow them to apply again. So I, I do wanna know who hasn't done it. Also, I don't know if I should talk about the e-bike campaign right now, or I could wait until it's my turn, but I would like Michael to get us some information on e-bikes, what maybe other cities are doing. You know, they have to wear helmets, or what their plan is for the e-bikes.
Sure. Do you want to include information on scooters as well, or just e-bikes?
Yes.
Bird scooters, things like that? So anything that's on sidewalks that's wheeled and, and have an engine?
Anything that has a minor could ride on.
Right. Okay, great.
And then, thank you. It, it was my pleasure to make that donation to the library. And thank you for putting together the Family Justice Center. And Shirley will be reaching out to you, because I know several people that need help, so it's a good program. Thank you very much. That's all.
I would just like to thank all of you that got up to spoke, speak tonight. I too have the same interest in Randall's issue on fireworks, so hopefully we'll be getting some more information and be able to work through that. And Bernadette, what you just said was absolutely what I, I think too, is that we have to be mindful also of what groups, how many we have in the area that are willing to do it. But also, like you say, maybe create a list of youth organizations that could use the help. With that being said, that's all I have tonight. With that being said, that's all I have tonight. Thank you to the ladies with domestic violence. I just handed your flyers because we didn't have enough to go around to our city manager and asked him to go ahead and scan it to us so that we all have it electronically as well. So thank you.
Okay, Madam Library, I want to thank you once again for always being here to share all the wonderful things that's happening at the, the library and inviting our families and our students out to the library. We thank you for your presence here tonight. The representative for the New Family Justice Center, thank you for this unfortunately very needed service in our community, in the South Bay community. I'm affiliated with a similar organization in Inglewood, so I know the hard work that you guys do at the New Justice, New Family Justice Center in promoting anti-domestic violence and also providing services to those who find themselves unfortunately victims of domestic violence. So I want to thank you for your, your service and I'm going to make my, my best to come to a site visit as well. Just in a conversation with someone, I, I'm sure unfortunately, we probably know at least one person that could use your service. I was just in a conversation with someone last week that definitely can use your services. So I'm going to make sure that she's aware of, of your services. So thank you very much. Also, I'm also interested in making sure that the, all the organizations that sell fireworks, that they in fact disclose what they actually do with the money in, in terms of being in performance with the municipal code to provide services to senior groups as well as youth groups. So make sure that they're in compliance with that. So, and that's what the audit is, is for. The audit is to make sure that, that they actually spent the appropriate amount of, of funds that they raised to go back to the community. So we'll make sure that we stay vigilant on that regard. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And lastly, I want to say about the, the increased deputy presence. Yes, we're, we're definitely looking forward to when we're able to increase the number of deputies on, on the street. Sometimes it's not a, a matter of whether we have the money or the will, but it's a matter of whether we have the resources or the county, I should say, have the resources. Seeing that, that of course we have to pull from that pool that's available in, in the county. They did have a lot of, and I think the freeze is still on. And if the freeze is not on, still on, it's, it's really a slow go. Cause a lot of police agencies have vacancies for whatever reason. That tells me not enough people are, either finding that they're interested in, in police services or there's something that's going on with their requirements that unfortunately a lot of people may not find themselves eligible. So it's got to be one or the other. Either they don't want to go in police services like they're used to or the requirements may be impediment to, to some folks. But at any rate, as soon as LA County increased their number of, of deputies available, we definitely will continue those discussions of adding deputies. But thank you for bringing that to our attention and we, we're there because public safety, of course, is number one in our community. So thank you for bringing that to our attention as well. With that, that's all I will have in terms of public comment and I will move our agenda. And we are now on. We are now on the consent calendar, item F. Item F, there's, let's see, three items under the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
So the motion's been made that we approve the consent calendar by Suarez and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Are there any discussion on the motion? CNN with the council, please vote on the consent calendar.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Next item is item G, under administration, item four, G four, a notice of completion concerning the annual street improvement project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Ahmad, our interim public works director will be presenting tonight.
Thank you so much, Sean. Pleasure to be here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem, members of city council. I'll make it very short and sweet. The item before you has to do with approval of notice of completion for the fiscal year 2020-21 Annual Street Improvement Program. And basically as included in the staff report, on August second of last year, city council awarded a construction contract to CCO Construction Company. This company, original contract included several streets throughout the city. It's noted in your staff report approximately one hundred and forty-two thousand square feet of streets. Manhattan Beach, Eastwood Avenue, Staler Avenue, Osage, Avis, One Hundred and Sixty-seventh Street and One Hundred and Sixty-first Street. Later on, there were a number of other locations that were added to the, to the contract. Work has been completed. Staff has reviewed and approved the completed work. And so the staff recommendation tonight is to accept the project completion for the fiscal year 2020-21 and authorize staff to file a notice of completion with the LA County Recorder Office. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the report? Okay, CNN, what is the pleasure of the council concerning this report?
I'll make a motion to go with the staff recommendation.
And I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made that we go accept with the staff recommendation. Motion was made by Kearney and seconded by Suarez. What is the staff recommendation? Is it receive and file?
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion's been made to receive and file.
No.
Mr. Mayor, there's actions.
It is, it is accept the project completion.
I know there's action. Okay, we will accept the completion of this, this project via the motion made by Pat Kearney and seconded by Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? Does the city attorney have anything you want to read there?
And, and authorize the staff to file the notice of completion.
And we will authorize the staff to file the, the notice of completion. That's all part of your motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and seconded. Okay, we, we, we got it. Okay. Any discussion on, on, on the motion that's been assembled? Okay, CNN with the council, please vote.
At least not on mine.
Who are you missing?
The mayor, Mr. Mayor. There we go. For item number four, the motion passes unanimously.
Ooh, that was hard. What is really going on? Okay, next item on, on the administration is the 2022 Pavement Management Program update.
Okay, that would be me also, Mr. Mayor. And just, just when you thought you had enough of pavement, there's one more item having to do with it. So very quickly, I'm going to introduce this item and I'm going to turn it over to Peter Bucknam, who is our consultant, who completed the pavement management report. Within your staff report, it, it gives you some numbers. The city has forty-five miles of total centerline miles. They're broken into different categories of local streets, collectors, arterials, as well as alleys. So Pavement Management Program, which, which we abbreviate PMP in your, in your staff report. It's a document that helps staff, city staff, as well as city council to prioritize, you know, what needs to be paved. You know, and best use of are dollars, scarce dollars for paving the streets. This document is, for the city of Longdale, is five years old. Typically, ideally needs to be reviewed every three years. So last year, council awarded a contract to Bucknam and Associates to do this. They're very expert in this, in this area. Report is completed, so I'm going to turn it over to Peter to give you all the good news and bad news. And then I'll come back with the staff recommendation.
Very good.
Thank you, Ahmad. Thank you, City Council, Honorable, Honorable Mayor and council members. Pleasure to be here tonight. Really briefly, my name is Peter Buckham. I'm the owner, operator of Buckham Infrastructure Group. I've been doing pavement management systems for twenty-five years, all throughout Southern California mostly. That's some up in the Bay and some in Arizona, but ninety-nine percent of them all here in LA County and Orange County. So we bring a lot of experience in regards to what we found here in Longdale. And like Ahmad said, it's been five years since the study, but it's mostly good news of what I'm going to be, what I'm going to be reporting this evening. So if you have any questions in the interim, you can ask me or we can wait to the end. As you can see, the, the city's update was, we were contracted late last year, early this year in two thousand and twenty-two over the last, really through February through May of this year, we performed the project. The PMP and the system for the city of Longdale has been in place for over twenty years. I was blessed to work with Longdale in two thousand and two, back when I was in a consulting firm, but we did the update here as well. So it's good that the city has been performing PMP updates on a somewhat routine basis and Metro, like Ahmad had indicated, Metro requires every three years for this report to be done and we were making that recommendation tonight. The system itself is about seven point seven million square feet of AC and PCC sections. So it's asphalt, concrete and Portland cement. The citywide network in regards to section miles is forty-eight miles long and regards to centerlines about forty-five. We've broken the system into what's called master plan of arterial highways, our arterial collector system, seventeen miles, twenty-six miles of locals, about five miles of alleys typical for LA cities. So the city is currently responsible for managing almost four hundred mile, or excuse me, four hundred total pavement sections. Pavement section will, for example, would be Main Street from First to Second Street, something like that. As you can see, we have a indicator here about what the current PCI is. I'll get, define what a PCI is in a few minutes. The arterial and local system are very similar in regards to PCI. For the alleys, it's typically one of the worst type of conditions of a network and that's common, but the PCI is sixty there. If we were to replace the entire system, the total recon, reconstruction value of the pavement management network, we're looking at about seventy million total dollars in value of AC and PCC. Really briefly, what factors go into pavement life as pavement is placed? Immediately, it will start to, to deteriorate based upon oxidation, oxidationation and weather and water. Other main factors that go into pavement impacts are traffic volumes, the type of pavement that was put down, poor construction sometimes, the age of asphalt. Some cities will put down an asphalt and not touch it for twenty years. That's not the best way to maintain pavement. Water runoff or overwatering due to landscaping, pumping from underneath and rain events. And one of the most important factors of pavement life cycles and how it will increase the speed of deterioration is the lack of preventative maintenance and rehab, rehab, rehabilitation maintenance. The city itself uses MicroPaver. It's a very common pavement management software on the market. It's been in place here in the city for over twenty years. And I'll explain what we did with that software in the database here in a minute. We also implemented for Ahmad and staff and the previous director, a Buckham web portal and anyone in the city can use it from the mayor to an associate engineer or someone in the maintenance department. I'll be showing that briefly here at one of the last slides, but it gives you a dynamic look right into the pavement management system for Longdale for anyone here at the city. So basic, real quick, the basic, uh, uh, main themes of a pavement management update. Assessment of the current segmentation, making sure that we validate every public street the city maintains. We work with public work staff and identifying what work histories are there over the last five years. We assess what was done for slurry seals, digouts, overlays, reconstruction projects, make sure we know what month and what year that work was done to make sure that we're scheduling prior, priority projects in the future. We obviously went out and performed pavement surveys as well as a sidewalk survey. I'll explain that in a few minutes. But then we look at the economic portion of the PMP, looking at what, what's the cost for a unit, cost per square foot to do a slurry, for example. We look at your available budget to develop rehab strategies and we forecast those budgets against the unit costs, against the PCIs to develop a five-year model. When I explain that in a few minutes here. This is a more detailed breakdown of those scope items, but again, we were, it was a very thorough project in regards to what we did. Payment condition, if you're not familiar, familiar with pavement management programs, one of the valuable tools to the P, the PMP is the PCI, Payment Condition Index. It's a value between zero and one hundred. Zero PCI would be what's considered a failed or a very, very poor street that has had, needs to be reconstructed. A one hundred street PCI would be a new street if it was added to the system, freshly overlayed. Or a overlay over an existing old pavement section will get you a PCI of one hundred. The weighted PCI for Longdale is seventy-three, so you're in the fair condition category, which in my opinion is a good value. It's a good number to be at. I'll explain that as I go through the presentation and look at the budget modeling that we perform for you. The three factors that go into pavement, uh, PCIs is when our inspectors, Buckham inspectors go out, we're looking for three main functions. And distresses out there, we're looking at the, excuse me, the distress type, alligator cracking, linear cracking. The quantity of that distress, if it's thirty percent, twenty percent, fifty percent of the area of the section and the distress severity. And there's over thirty-nine different types of distresses. I won't go into the details of those tonight. We would be here for hours, but there's thirty-nine possible distresses that an inspector can find out there. So once those three main factors are calculated in the field, you generate a PCI. You might be familiar with these types of graphics in regards to what PCIs look like. PCI of eighty-six to one hundred, it looks like a brand new street almost. You start to get some minor weathering there, some finer aggregates start chipping away, but this is typical. And then you look at PCI of sixty, eighty-five, typically these would be sections that qualify for slurry. That's actually an old slurry that's deteriorated on an original asphalt. And you can see the, the grayer area is the removal of the aggregate from the original, of the new slurry and the PCI gets down to sixty, eighty-five. You can, you can apply slurry on top of slurry, but these are what those conditions we'll start looking at. As the section gets worse and the severities get to a level of moderate or severe, this type of alligator cracking will be more prevalent across the section. It might cover sixty to seventy percent of the section. The PCI is dropped to forty to sixty, which will trigger an overlay type of maintenance. And I'll explain the type of maintenance we look at in a few slides here. Now, we don't want these. These are blowouts. So this is an alligator section that obviously blew out in regards to the big aggregate pieces falling out. This could happen right after a rain event. The alligator cracking in the lower portion of the image of, after a rain event will look like the upper portion of that image due to the removal of the big aggregate pieces. So in regards to the PCIs that were collected, again, we looked at four hundred sections. Each one of those sections carries a linear footage. This is a representation of section miles, so the four hundred mile, the four hundred total sections broken out by miles. It's a good sign. If I was to come in blind into a city and not know what city I was looking at and I saw this table, my immediate look would be the top two blue cells on that, on that table. They're looking at fifty, over fifty percent of the system is in good to very good. That's a good start because when back in two thousand and two, two thousand and ten, two thousand and sixteen updates from the city, the weighted PCI for Longdale was down in the low sixties and slowly creeped up. So if you're at seventy-three, that's a good trend. So most of the news I'll be reporting here this evening is good, as long as the budget, future budgets are going to be there, we'll see. But you can see, it's a good indicator that over fifty percent of the system's in good to very good condition. I've been, like I said, I've been doing this for twenty-five years. We work with a lot of cities that have very high PCIs in the eighties. The optimal PCI for any size city could be a city of five miles or could be a city of five thousand miles like LA. If your weighted PCI is above seventy-eight, anywhere between seventy-eight and eighty-two, you're what I consider, my professional opinion is you're in a preventative maintenance state and that is the optimal PCI to be at. There's no need to go to eighty-five or ninety. If you have any questions on that, I can answer that later. But the optimal PCI, in my opinion, is eighty as an average. So we'll show the models here in a few minutes, but there's reasons for that. This is a graphical representation of that table. You can see a lot of the blue there, over fifty percent. of that table. You can see a lot of the blue there, over 50%. What we also deliver to the city, we're not just giving them a report. Again, this report is a planning document. This is a priority planning document for public works to consider what projects to design and actually put to construction for 2023, 24, 24, 25 fiscal years and beyond. So we initially provide the city staff as a pavement condition index report, which carries valuable, not only conditional values, but also distress extents over on the far right. So if there are any questions on that in regards to what the climate, what load, I can answer those. But we give them valuable data to make good, solid engineering decisions to prioritize. We also link the system to your GIS, so all those PCIs are graphically represented. You can see trends in certain neighborhoods. When it gets to my passion about PMP is the budgetary side of PMP. It's where I really love to focus on. And we can see, when we see maintenance zones, like the city has the gray areas there are the four maintenance zones in the city. We can then prioritize with Ahmad and other staff, okay, we should focus next year on zone two, then zone four, then zone one, zone three. So the graphical representation is a great output from our project. Moving into the economic portion of the PMP, we obviously looked at the actual budgets that the city was spinning, but with Ahmad and his predecessor as well, it was decided on in the final report to put two major budgets into the report. The first one is to identify what is needed annually to maintain the system at today's condition. I'll walk out in front of City Council, in 2027, we want the city to look like this. So that's the maintained budget. The secondary model was to improve the PCI. Again, it's beautiful that we're looking at a PCI of 80. It's achievable. I've worked with a lot of cities that have achieved this over the years, and if there's any questions after, I can answer how. But the secondary PCI was reaching, again, a PCI of 80 in five years. We also can consider other funding sources. We look at what's coming from Prop C, Measure R, Measure M, other federal monies that are trickling down for each city. I work with over 62 cities in Southern California currently as a firm, so that's quite a bit. So we have a lot of different types of funding mechanisms that cities are proactively going after from general benefit taxes and other things as well. But every city's unique, but it's something that the city should always look at in the three-year update when you're doing this. Always look at alternative pavement applications like rubber overlays. What, there's some cities have general benefit taxes. How did they achieve that? How did they get this $10 million influx from the general benefit tax over the next five years? Those things have been achieved and are possible. Here's the typical industry, pavement industry standard deterioration curve. If the time scales on the bottom and the X-value, you're looking at zero to 25-year lifecycle. If the street is actually constructed and nothing's done on asphalt concrete, that that section will typically last for 25 years with no maintenance. Our goal as a team, as a staff and as a city council, is to be good proponents of PMP and audit ourselves, to be accountable, and maintain a high condition level. And that's why I've kind of hinted at here a few times this evening. The upper, you can see the deterioration scale goes down over the 25 years. Those top blips on top are slurry seal applications, which are preventative maintenance efforts that a director would instruct his team to go out and do, like, okay, let's go in the zone two and slurry every street that qualifies for a slurry. That will extend the life of that 25-year asphalt. So a couple of slurry seals in the first 15 years of a pavement's life will extend it by almost seven to 10 years. So you're looking at 35 years plus. Then after two slurries, you would come in and do an overlay and reset the clock. So it's good to be doing PMP, not neglecting. What we also generate when we're looking at the budgets for the public works staff, we deliver a what's called a forecast maintenance report. This is in the report that you have as a city. This is a five-year spreadsheet that prioritizes by year, and then what sections are recommended for that year, and what the recommended work is being performed, and what that cost is based upon the unit cost of that study. So FMR prioritizes road segments first by year, then by zone, then by PCI and other factors. Again, this is a planning program tool that the city can consider, these recommendations. There are some sample maintenance rehab methods that we look at for our clients, especially in here in Longdale. We'll look at cracked ceiling, slurry ceiling, cave seals, overlays, reconstructions. Those on the far right of those, you can see the PCI ranges for those maintenance types, that would trigger that type of maintenance. So the first scenario, what we perform, like I said, was to maintain the system. You can see on the, kind of the left side of that table, the PCI of 73 maintains itself all the way through 2027. That's great news. We're recommending minimal slurry and cave seal activities, which is typical for a network that's in a level of 73. We're recommending proactive overlay reconstruction, about $700,000 per year, so $3.7 million appropriation of funding for the PMP for the next five years to maintain the PCI. Another key factor I look at as a manager of PMP is not just PCI impact. Is the budget going to make it go down or go up? The same factor is deferred maintenance. I actually consider deferred maintenance more important than PCI, because I do this quite a bit. Deferred maintenance is like debt on the system. Based upon those PCI ranges that trigger maintenance, that is how much work can be done today if we were to do it all today. Now, we don't do that, obviously. But you're looking at over a $10 million deferred maintenance budget. That's not a bad thing. It's just a scheduling prioritization tool that managers like myself use to identify how the budget is performing, again, against the PCI, as well as the deferred maintenance work. I mean, I work with some cities that have over $300 million in deferred maintenance. Longdale does not have that. So it's a good thing. So you can see the results of scenario one. Scenario two, going to reach a PCI of 80, we actually, actually, we actually modeled that we get there by three years. In 24, 25, we're looking at 75. About the same appropriation of slurry and cave seal maintenance, more aggressive overlay, because you're currently still, what I call, in the overlay business. My professional opinion, once you get over a PCI of about 77, 78, you're in the preventative maintenance business. You're not there yet. You're still in the overlay business. There's still amount, a large amount of overlay that's needed, that's identified in the deferred maintenance quantities. So it's key that the city continue to proactively fund overlay in the city. The beautiful thing about this budget, it's achievable. It's a $9.5 million investment, I understand that, but deferred maintenance on this gets cut in half. So you're looking at a great reduction of deferred maintenance. And I can guarantee you, I work with a lot of cities in LA and Orange that have achieved this, and when they get to 80, that deferred maintenance quantity, that 4.7 in your case, will be, majority of that work will be slurry seal maintenance at about $0.50 to $1 per square foot, rather than $3, $5, $7 a square foot today for overlay. So that's a good result. Again, additionally, what we did for the city, we surveyed all your, we actually built an inventory of your sidewalks. So we digitized every single sidewalk in the city in GIS. Then we went out and performed condition assessments on the sidewalks to find trip hazards, cracking, linear cracking, you know, ramp, you know, sections that are, you know, deflecting where they need to be grinded, ramped, or replaced. All that's been delivered to the public works department. We also went out and did an ADA ramp location, but intersections included ADA compliant ramps and which ones did not. So those distress locations were also prioritized based upon distress severity, low severity, like grinding issues, or high severity where you might have a two, two-foot deflection of sidewalk that's ramped currently. Seen a few of those. We also prioritized based on the general location of that distress. If it was located next to a city hall, a public library, like here, a school, and another city location, a city facility, we actually prioritized those to be more important due to the pedestrian traffic in those areas. Okay. Also, what we did was a street striping inventory for the city. So every street that had striping anywhere along that route, we digitized that in GIS as well. So wrapping up, the funding and recommendations, again, here's the weighted PCI of 73. You're kind of what I consider, it's, like I said in the beginning, it's a fair average. It's almost like a par, and if you're golfing, that's fine. That's a good place to be right now compared to other cities. The county itself of LA, the weighted average of all cities in the county here is 68. So you're above that. The weighted average for the state is 66 of California. The only county that's above you right now, pretty much, that's local, is Orange County. Orange County's weighted average is 80. So they've had a more dynamic funding mechanism down there with their measure M over the last 30 years compared to Metro. So those are where you are. Like you said, you're about average, which is a good place to be in today's inflation and other issues that we're dealing with. 18% of the arterial system needs to be overlayed. So what I mentioned earlier, the overlay is key. Those miles have been identified for Ahmad and others to consider. Same with the local system. You're looking at about a quarter of the system needs to be overlaid for locals. And then there's a repeated, repetitive thing I've said already. There's the budget result recommendation for maintaining the PCI 73, proactively looking at and focusing on increasing capital improvement programs and maintenance projects in locals and arterioles to get to an 80. That's all been identified in our report. Re-audit, basically auditing yourself every three years to make sure the team, everyone here in this, in this room and beyond, is accountable for what we're trying to do. That's a key to any successful PMP. Audit the budget itself, the budget allocations that we've identified are the city's actual budget. To audit yourself through inspections every three years, and audit yourself to generate this report every three years. That would be an initial great tool to really improve PCIs in Longdale. We also provided what Buckham has produced over the last few years. It's a proprietary PMP web portal that Buckham has produced for our cities. We deliver this now to every PMP client we have. We have this in over 50 cities in LA and Orange County. This is a tool where if you, anyone, like I said, anyone in the city council, staff, public works department, any department in the city can go in here, turn this on through any web browser. There's really no license fees to it. It's kind of a give-back from Buckham to the cities. It's a tool, a PMP tool, that allows the users to access query, based upon your query, it will cost us estimate the cost of doing maintenance on that location, or that 400 locations that you selected. It'll generate reports, like a PCI report, NFR report, and actually allow now, what we're doing for cities, because we, Ahmad puts together a design estimate for a cost for a section like Main Street from First to Second, let's say, you're not only looking at the material cost for asphalt, that's the given. There's contingency items on there. Manholes, ADA ramps, sidewalk improvements, tree replacements, sidewalk distresses that can be considered as contingency items to the cost estimate for the PMP. So what Buckham has allowed the city to do now, Longdale can actually, because you have a GIS department, we actually implemented your GIS here at the same time as this project. So we turned that on for you. Any other street and right-of-way asset that's critical to the pavement cost estimation, they can look at now. They can actually query this through the map, select that street, and it will define the pavement quantities, the cost of doing maintenance, how many manholes are there, how many ADA ramps are there, how many linear feet of water sewer pipe is there, to allow them to have a better discussion when it comes up, when it comes to cost estimating. So it's a great tool that we, like it says over there on the right, we've built a bridge between this planning document that you[1392.71] We've built a bridge between this planning document that you have in front of you and the design cost estimation that's critical for PMP. So with that, thank you for the time. If you have any questions?
Very good. Thank you for that comprehensive report. We really appreciate that and appreciate the, the good news. I didn't hear any bad news. You got some bad news waiting on us? You said good news and bad news.
The bad news is we've got to spend some money.
True. But that's the cost of doing business. All right. Let's hear from the council. Any questions on the report or observations?
Just comments, because I'm glad you included in comparison to the county as a whole. That was going to be my question is, well, what should you be at or what is, where is everybody else? Knowing that you always want to aim higher, but you know, so that is some good information. I remember when we, when we made, you know, put it on the agenda to, for this agreement for you to, for your team to do the work. You know, I was interested to see, you know, where is the city at? But I guess one of my, my questions was, and maybe this is for staff too. It seems like from twenty, from two thousand and two to twenty twenty-two, we increased more or less ten percentage points, I guess you can say. But now I guess we're trying to go up eight in five years. So I guess we're just, it's, it's a matter of we're aiming for that, but you know, year over year, we're going to have to budget for this, right? So we, we're going to aim for that, but not necessarily agreeing that, you know, it may or may not work out that way. I'm just trying to understand at this point, this is our goal, right, of what we're trying to reach. But year after year, we have to actually budget for, for all of these improvements.
Right. I understand that question. We get that a lot. One thing I actually, we just kicked off a project today in Linwood. I asked that question to the director. I was like, okay, we're looking at a five-year program, a seven-year program, or a ten-year program. So this, this schedule here, this scenario too, can be stretched or extended to seven years. The cost of doing maintenance won't be nine point five now. It'll probably be nine, you know, nine point nine, ten point two million dollars. But you're still within, within a manageable time sequence of seven years, which is fine. You know, we were just selected a year ago by OCTA, the Transportation Authority, last year down there in Orange County, to do a countywide assessment of all thirty-five agencies PMP. So I was a project manager on that over the last year. I've looked at every single city in the county of Orange on that topic. Do we try to maintain a PCI of eighty in Orange County for five years, seven years, or ten years? And Pete, what's the cost to do those, that three scenarios? So that's common. Again, this is a planning document. If this, we can, we can go back and rerun these models quite readily, you know, very quickly to extend it to seven years. To give city council and Ahmad and his staff what he needs to have other discussions with you.
No, thanks. I think it's more the concern of the money. Where is that going to come from? But I'm definitely very impressed, learned a lot with this, you know, documentation, presentation. So I do appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. I have one question. If on page, whatever page this is, we have the background. If, if our alleys were completed and the percentage was right now sixty point one, if they were completed, how? How much would that raise our percentage, you know, off the top of your head, do the math in your head?
It's about five miles of alleys. The square footage is going to be smaller because it's basically very narrow alleys.
Would it raise it?
Maybe in my experience, when you do that, if you, to reconstruct all the PCC in there, you're looking at maybe a point to two max of those PCI. It's not enough area because the weighted PCI is weighted based upon the area that you're going against. So the section PCI is pushed into that value of the total network.
Yeah, that's what it shows in the pie chart.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for your report. And I too, I'm excited that, to hear that our ratings for our PCI has improved over the last few years and that we're looking pretty good. Of course, there's always room for growth as the budget will allow, of course. And we will strive to, to get to the eighty. But I'm just delighted to see that we're at seventy-three and that we are above the county as a whole. I would say, without calling any cities out, but there's cities that are, let's say notorious for having, you know, bad road conditions or what have you. And I, I would imagine, I'm just kind of guessing what, what their ratings would be for the PCI on rating. Seeing that I'm not an expert, but just looking based on your presentation, in my mind, I was thinking, how do we compare against city A, B, and C? You know, without naming the cities or what have you. But of course, this makes a clearer picture that we're doing pretty, pretty well, but with some room to grow. You know, for the conditions of our, of our roads. And that's something that we strive to continue to provide good road conditions because we understand that having great roads and good road conditions is, speaks to the quality of life. You know, not only for the individuals, but also for your cars and your vehicles, right?
And attracting business.
Right, and attracting business as well, because you know, people don't want to locate their business on a street that's not functional. So I really appreciate this comprehensive report, and we really appreciate it. We'll continue to strive to get to that eighty. Are there any other comments? Okay, with that, we are, I will entertain a motion on this item. You hear something? You say got, this is not bad news.
No, I, I think, I was going to come back with the official recommendation, but I think it was all discussed and mentioned.
It was. Okay. Okay, so what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item, this report?
Is he going to read his recommendation or no?
Approve the final, yeah, approve the final report of the two thousand and twenty-two pavement management program as presented. Adhere to the city's goal of achieving a pavement condition index PCI of eighty by fiscal year two thousand and twenty-seven.
Yeah, there's two recommendations here.
And with that, I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Motion has been made that we accept the staff recommendation, which include those two previously stated items approval of the final report, as well as adhering to the city's goal of achieving a pavement condition index of eighty percent.
I'll second that.
All right. Hoffman has it, so seconded by Hoffman Gorman. Is there any discussion on, on the motion? CNN with the council, please vote on the motion.
For item number five, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you for that report. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, let's see, so the next item on the agenda is item six. Mr. City Manager, do you want to speak on that item or?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. Good evening. This staff's requesting that we pull this item. As the LA, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department mentioned, they have located the truck. So at this point, we're asking the council to pull the item and if necessary, bring it back later for reconsideration.
Okay, without objection, we'll, we'll pull item six from the agenda tonight. And we will move item seven, agreement for GIS services. Let's hear the staff report. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, the public, Jared Chubb with the Community Development Department. I'm going to speak about the agreement for the Geographical Information Systems Services. The Department of Community Development and the Municipal Services Department has been using this GIS system to get information on properties such as zoning, ownership, lot size, and even sales dates, et cetera. The GovClarity has automated the search for the property information, and it's now, it's an integral part of staff's research and analysis. And as of this, it, as of today, we're, it's about to expire on October second of two thousand and twenty-two. We usually do a three-year, one-year term contracts. So every three years, we're bringing it up to council for reapproval. And we are requesting today that we extend the GIS contract with one, three one-year terms from October second, two thousand and twenty-two to October first, two thousand and twenty-five. And that concludes staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the staff report? Any questions? CNN will entertain a motion.
I, I do have a quick question.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Is there a fee to use the system?
We do have it as part of the budget every year for contract services. And there is a fee that is charged yearly, which is a seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollar fee. And it is budgeted every year for that one, the three one-year terms.
Thank you. And with that, I'll motion to approve.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Quavis that we approved the extension with light box and seconded by Kearney. Are there any discussions on the motion? Or is there? CNN with the council, please vote on the motion.
For item number seven, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item eight is a revision of the two thousand and twenty-one through twenty-nine general plan housing elements.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the community development. This is a revision of the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-nine general plan housing element six cycle resolution. So as you may know, we came before you in February seventh, two thousand and twenty-second to adopt the, the housing element in order for us to get it certified by HCD, Housing, Community Development, State Department. And as part of that, that process, we did get that approval from council submitted over to HCD for comments, and we did receive comments in April of two thousand and twenty-two, of the, this year, basically. So we did attach the comment letter, and as part of the comment letter, we have to update our resolution to be able to add a finding speaking about the residential developments that were, were chosen as part of the sites for housing, for the regional housing needs assessment. And we did add the finding, and you can see the changes in yellow on the back of what was added as part of HCD's comments. And in order for us to resubmit to HCD by October fifteenth and be able to get this housing element certified in time, we will need to make this update, approve it, and then resubmit it to HCD. And then hopefully get it certified by the date so that we can finish our land use element. Instead of by October of this year, we would have an extension of three more years. So this would be part of the comments from HCD, just a cleanup item, and this is what we're presenting to you today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Are there any discussions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add additional information.
Yes.
Yeah, again, this is unprecedented level of we're seeing from HCD. Just to point out to the council, we've never, on all my years updating housing elements, we have not seen this, this level of review on housing elements. But just to show you that the level they're, that they're reviewing is, and it's why it's taken so long for many jurisdictions.
I'd like to add one more thing. My understanding is that in the South Bay cities, only about, I believe, one city has been certified by HCD. So everybody else is still working on it.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, usually, yeah, it takes them a while to get around to certify, and I guess because they have, at least in LA County, eighty-eight cities. I guess it's the whole state they have to certify, so. Any discussion?
No discussion. I'll make the motion. I know this is something we've been working on for a while, like staff mentioned. So I'd like to see this move forward so we can finally check the box.
And I'll second it.
Okay. And I assume your motion is to approve the revision of the resolution, said resolution?
That is correct.
Adopting the six-cycle general plan housing elements update with HDC's required edits. Okay, with that being the case, the motion has been made by Suarez and seconded by Pat Kearney, Councilman Kearney. Are there any discussions on the motion? CNN with the council, please vote on the motion.
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam. Next item, items from the city manager's office.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again, and the residents and public. As you know, I mentioned a week or so ago, where Caltrans was out today doing the cleanups, so they were out and about. I did see a little bit of debris left by, but it was, it was being carried by some of the folks that are unhoused. So I did drive around the city, but I did see the big, large groups of stuff, because we did reach out to Caltrans that asked them, you know, if the folks aren't going to take their stuff on the side of the four oh five to at least, you know, at least, you know, take it to a suitable location for them to relocate, to pick up their items and stuff. But apparently, we didn't have too much issue this, this time around, so just wanted to heads up on that. Moving forward with the, with the, I just want to bring to the council's attention concerning the, you know, the governor's order has since lifted on the COVID in terms of some of the emergency orders. And so staff is going to be reaching out to some of the restaurants that still have some of the outdoor seating areas. And so we're going to be giving them till January thirty-first to start looking for alternatives, meeting with the staff, looking at doing some expansion. But look at bringing some of those tents in, bringing some of the tarps down, and if they have some alternative, propose them to staff. So we'll be sending those letters out to the business owners shortly this week. We're drafting the letters. There's about, only about four businesses right now. So we're going to let them know and talk to them. They have to about, we'll give them to about January thirty-first to meet with us and comply with the requirements. And that's it.
I have a question, I have a question on that. I would like to see as, as much as, as possible, that restaurants in particular that have outdoor eatings. I know we made those allowances for the pandemic. But I think it's become part of the new culture, if you will. And people are loving the opportunity to dine outdoors. And of course, the, the business owners are enjoying the opportunity to service those customers that otherwise would not want to eat indoors. I think it would be, who was, as much as possible to, and I, and I know parking is part of the things we have to look at because we lost parking by having, you know, them able to have outdoors, you know, seating and so what have you. But I think it, I think it is worthy of revisiting to see if we can make some allowances. It may not work for every restaurant or what have you, depending on the parking situation or what have you. But somehow we got, somehow we made it through. You know, even though we had parking standards or what have you, we had restaurants set up outside, and we made it through almost three years somehow. Right. And so I don't think that because the pandemic is, the pandemic is over, all of a sudden, we're going to have all these additional cars that we need to park on the, you know, on the, on the property. I just don't see that. I mean, it could be the case. But I think it's, it's worthy of taking a look at.
Will do, Mr. Mayor. We do allow, as the council and the Hawthorne Plan, three, at least two of the businesses have the opportunity to file for special use permits to be permitted to eat outdoors. They are allowed to do that. They're subject to that. The other two businesses are not within the Hawthorne Plan, but they can provide alternatives with a parking study. And they can, that would go to the Planning Commission, subject to the review. So there are opportunities to allow those types of uses, and we have, and we've been very flexible with all the businesses. Not just the ones for the restaurants, but all the businesses in the city. We certainly work with them and, and continue. I just want the council to be aware that now that the orders have been lifted, we definitely need to, and we're being very flexible. We're, we're sending out the letters and giving them about five months.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone have anything on the manager's report?
Really quick on that. On the letter you guys are sending, can you put some, somewhere in there that they could apply for a conditional permit? So it allows them to present a plan to, to us?
Yes, that's a great suggestion. We'll put that in the letter.
Very good.
To meet with Jared and staff and to look at alternatives for, for outdoor seating.
Outdoor seating, yes.
Very good. Good suggestion. That's it for you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right. Let's hear from Councilman Kearney.
I just attended two things. I attended the, the attorney's meet and greet, little soiree they had at League of California Cities. And then I also attended League of California Cities the last day to make sure our delegate found her way to their side of the fence to vote, and I left. With that, I pass it on to you, Robert.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you for that. Councilwoman Suarez.
I just have a couple. On Friday, September ninth, myself, Mayor Pro Tim Hoffman-Gorman and Mayor Paul Miles attended the swearing-in ceremony for the newly elected Assembly Member for the sixty-second district, Tina McKinner. I did have conversation with her. I think all of us kind of did, and very much she says she's looking forward to working with the city of Longdale. So, you know, looking forward to working with her to see, you know, how we can improve the relationship and build that partnership. And then the other thing that I did attend on September fourteenth was the Eighth Annual Environmental Justice Conference for South Coast AQMD, Air Quality Management District. It was a Zoom call, so it was just in the morning. I did have a few meetings conflicted. So I was able to sit on for part of the panels. One in particular, they did talk about, so with regards to the subject topic, it greatly applies to regions like ours. It talks about how, I guess minorities and, and in that respect, how they deal with air quality and the things that impact regions such as ours and how we include regions such as ours into the conversation. So one of them, it was interesting, they said you can even buy your own, like, I guess it tracks what your air quality looks like. And you can, you know, to kind of see like what, you know, what, what rating or whatnot. So that was interesting to me. I didn't even know you could do something like that. But those are the two I have to report, and with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Quavis.
All right. September seventh through the ninth, I attended the Annual League of California Cities Conference in Expo. Very informative, brought back some ideas for the youth, creating, creating a youth-friendly city without putting much money and including them in our city. Also about CEQA and the ARPA funds. On September tenth, I attended the City of Carson Cajun and Blues White Linen Affair Dinner. September seventeenth, I participated in the semi-yearly Beautification Committee City Cleanup Day. I would like to thank Olga and Blanca for being there and the entire committee for putting, the Beautification Committee for putting this event on. I believe there's going to be another one in March, so look for that upcoming. This year, we did not have many participants, but hopefully in March, we'll have a few more people attending the cleanup. One recommendation is if we could put those electronic street electrical signs that say, or is that?
The mobile trailer signs, yes.
Saying, you know, cleanup, it's going to be on the seventeenth or whatever date we pick so that, and where, so that people know where to attend or where to go. Also, Michael, is there any way we could get an activity report for the work that you're doing with the homeless? Maybe a monthly report saying how many homeless we house or helped house and what your team is doing?
Certainly, we can absolutely do that for you, Councilwoman. I noticed after the cleanup today, we did have two women that I've never seen before as a result of, one of them did say she was sleeping up in the four oh five bank and it was cleaned out, so I made a phone call to PATH for her today. They were unfortunately already closed for the day, but yeah, I can certainly give information of the contacts we make and the successes we've had and some of the setbacks and problem areas we were discovering as well.
Because you guys are doing great work, but I want the community to know what exactly we're doing and where we're placing them.
Of course, of course, absolutely.
Also, if council is okay, council members are okay, once in a while, I would like to stop in at the youth committee advisory committee meetings to see what they're working on. I, I feel that they should hear also from us, not besides the director that's handling the group or is working with the group. I feel that they're going to be our future here in the city and possibly future council members. So if it's okay, maybe we could take turns on going into those meetings and talking to them and getting their ideas of what they expect from the city. And then, you know, work with them on programs and things like that that they would like for us to fund. Let's see, sorry, have my notes here. The, the last thing is if it's possible to get information on the ARPA funds that we received and what they were used for and how much we have left, because they are going to expire in December of two thousand and twenty-six. So we should, I don't know if we have a plan on what to use those ARPA funds for. So maybe we could work on getting that together, a plan if we don't have that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Pro Tim, Hoffman-Gorman.
I also attended on September eighth, the reception by Burke Williams, and it was absolutely beautiful. Nice evening spent out with members from other cities as well. On the ninth, I did attend the Assembly person swearing in Tina McKinner with Bernadette and the mayor. And then on the twelfth, the mayor and I had a meeting, it was a Zoom meeting, with the Transportation Deputy of the Chair of Metro. And we have a few more here that we have asked to schedule that are beginning to fill up our calendar. I'm really happy that she listened as well as she did and shared part of the same feelings as our community does as far as our concerns about Metro. We were heard. as our community does, as far as our concerns about Metro. We were heard. I really felt like we were heard. I think that there were a couple of items in which she turned around and said, I can do that right now. And, and so I felt very positive that we were heard. I look forward to continuing to meet with, even, even if that Metro Board member doesn't meet with us, their transportation deputies are hearing us, and I think it is being conveyed. I did ask on the 9th, I spoke to Holly Mitchell, and asked her specifically to please meet with us, and she has agreed to, to meet with us without sending her transportation deputy. So that also is, I think, something moving in the right direction. As I said to Holly, it's not about right now whether you agree with it or not. It's about hearing what the Longdale resident's concerns are. So, and the first transportation deputy heard us loud and clear, Mrs. Quavis, regarding the fact that I wanted a secondary meeting. And so I felt that was a positive. I'm also going to reach out to Mayor Butz's office personally and ask him to also join us for a meeting. Just because I'm the new kid on the block, so to speak, I think that him and I should, I think he should be more open to it. I haven't asked him for twenty meetings. I, so this would be a good place to start. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for bringing up, Madam Pro Tem, Metro. So what we're doing is, the Pro Tem and I, of course, in collaborations with our colleagues, we are conducting at least meetings with as many of board members of the Metro as possible, with the goal is to make sure that the Metro Board members understand our concerns and understand the mitigation measures that we want to see in the project, whether, no matter which project that they adopt, whether it's the row or down Hawthorne Boulevard, we want to make sure that they hear directly from us, because we cannot rely on the Metro Board staff to underscore what we're looking for in the City of Longdale. Now, we do know that certain things naturally are going to be in the environmental impact statement. They're going to have to analyze those, and they're going to have to give, in, you know, whatever weight they give them in terms of findings. But we want to make sure that the Board of Supervisors slash Metro slash the City of LA, I say that slash because these are the, the entities that have the most representatives on the board, that they understand that, that we insist on having, if you go down row, the row, that's Condon Avenue, that we have a trench. It's not debatable. We're not looking for anything other than a trench and a top over the trench. And so at, at one point, that was understood, totally understood, was not even an, an issue of debate. But now, it, it seems like it's, it's one of those things that, oh, you might can get a trench or what have you, right? Maybe get a trench. And that's what we heard the last time we, we met with Metro, when Metro came and did the little meeting that they had. But we want to talk directly to the members, if not the members directly, to their transportation, so that before they sit down and have the, the board, the staff, give their, their staff recommendation and the slideshow and all that kind of stuff, they already know where we're coming from. You know, because we don't know what the staff report is going to emphasize. We have nothing to do with that. And so, and that's why we're having these series of meetings with either the board member or, members or their transportation deputy. And so those meetings will continue. And I, and I was encouraged by the, the last meeting, the first meeting, that the deputy definitely heard us in terms of making sure that we get additional meetings here in the City of Longdale like we were promised. With that being the case, since the last meeting I attended, the City of Hawthorne had this unique thing that I've never heard of before. It was called Truck Day. And so, so the Truck Day was basically, they bring out all the trucks, you know, dump trucks, you know, trash trucks, utility trucks, you know, you name them, right? And the kids and the, you know, residents get to go in the trucks. Right? So you may have seen a post of me on that utility, you know, the big, I don't know what they call it. You guys know what I'm talking about in Public Works, you know, the big, you know, yeah, the picker. Yeah.
Were you up at the cherry?
Yeah, I was up in the cherry picking. They went all the way. You can see Palisverde's, you can see the whole, you can see the whole nine yards. I even took pictures, you know, while I was there or what have you. It was kind of like a Disney ride, you know, if you will.
Tower of Heaven.
Yeah. Yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty. I mean, how many, how many chances do you get to get on a cherry picker, you know? So not too many opportunities.
I'm excited about getting inside the trash truck, remember?
Oh, yeah.
We used to have the parade, and you could sit in the trash.
Get to sit in the trash truck. Well, you could have done that on Saturday. You know, so, but it was a night, it was a nice event, you know, it was a little, that was when it was raining a little bit, but it was a nice event and what have you. So I, I got on that thing, and I took one for the team. So that was pretty, pretty good. I also attended the League of California Cities. I attended a few receptions. I want to thank the delegates for being there to represent the city. I was kind of there as a, a filler to make, it seemed like there was a lot of people who had attended, right? There was a lot of people attending. It was good.
Check on it.
Yeah, right, right. A lot of networking opportunities, and so that was, that was a good event. And I want to thank my city attorneys for the, the fabulous meet and greet reception. Thank you for having us. That was great. And also attended since the last meeting, the swearing-in ceremony of our new Assembly Member Tina McKinner. We wish her much, much success in building our relationship with the City of Longdale and the cities in the, in the district and working together to make things happen. And so congratulations to Tina McKinner, Assembly Member. And with that, that's all I have. And it's adjournment time. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council was happening. Yeah, I know it was a closed session. I saw this, but then I didn't see it on the, on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the closed session for tonight is canceled. We put it on the agenda as a placeholder. As it turns out, the facts that have been provided in my office are not sufficient to create a need for a closed session tonight. So yes, sir, we are moving on to adjournment. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification, and thank you guys for pumping the brakes right there. Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, October 3rd, 2022, in these here chambers. It's now 8:11. This meeting is adjourned.